And item 9A, Mr. Dickerson.
Mayor, maybe I'll just take a moment to introduce the topic and we'll turn it over to Mr. Moll and his staff, but at the last city council meeting, Councilmember Dickerson and then other councilmembers expressed an interest as well that the air quality management district is embarking on a new work effort known as the Regional Climate Action Plan. We discussed that briefly two weeks ago in terms of a topic of potential interest and so per the council's direction, we've invited Mr. Moll and his staff and consultant to make a presentation to the council this evening, they're prepared to do so. I think also in your packet tonight, you had some written material or some slides that the Air Quality Management District provided, so that's his resource material for you as well. So the primary intent of this item is to hear more from the district relative to the work effort it's embarked upon. So we can introduce Mr. Moll and his staff and go from there.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the council. You want to start the timer? Russ Moll, I'm the Air Pollution Control Officer for Shasta County. As you're aware, the Air Quality Management District covers the entirety of Shasta County, including the three cities. We've undertaken an effort, as you know, there's been a lot of discussion about greenhouse gases. A lot of it seems a little bit back and forth in Sacramento and a little bit up in the air, so to speak. And so what we decided to do, we work with, among many of the things that we do, we work with most of the large employers in this community, the ones that affect almost all of our lives, power generating facilities, timber companies, mining companies, and we work with those folks to make sure they're in compliance with air quality regulations, including greenhouse gases. As you know, most agencies and most local jurisdictions do not have a great deal of historical information on greenhouse gases. So what we've undertaken is to develop an inventory of those greenhouse gases locally so that we can use those for writing our permits and doing our planning documents. And what we decided to do also was to invite the local jurisdictions, and in May of last year, we sent a letter to all of the local jurisdictions asking if they'd be interested in participating because we thought that a lot of that information would be good information for the local planning agencies. The local planning agencies are writing their, are going to be participating with Regional Transportation Planning Agency on their 375 compliance for the Sustainable Community Strategy. And we figured that this information would be real valuable and free to those local jurisdictions that wanted to participate. You're under no obligation to participate if you don't want, it will not affect the process. We'd like to have you participate, we think the information would be of tremendous value. I'm going to have Cully Thomas with AECom make a brief presentation, kind of an overview of the project, and if you have any questions beyond that, please feel free to ask and I'll come back up.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, councilmembers. So tonight, I mean, let's go over the basics of the proposed Regional Climate Action Plan process and some of the context surrounding that. Feel free to jump in with questions as you see fit. Whoa, care of trigger on that. So basically, go over the approach, discuss the subarea approach, and then the relationship between the CAP and the Climate Action Plan and the Regional Transportation Plan. Also talk about how we can take these state mandates and maybe turn them into local opportunities for energy efficiency and cost savings. And then talk about the process and the schedule of the Climate Action Plan. So the approach, we're really excited about the Shasta Regional CAP because it's an opportunity to not only look at countywide emissions and energy savings, but also at the jurisdictional level. The subarea approach is an approach that will look at the countywide, but each individual jurisdiction as well. So the unincorporated areas of the county is one subarea, and then each city within the county will be treated as separate subareas.
I have a question, please, Madam Mayor. Has the district given any consideration to using, as opposed to the three municipalities, the SEQA concept that we have here within Shasta County, which in effect is the three municipal jurisdictions for the most part?
I can't speak to that exactly, but the way the subareas are broken down, obviously the jurisdiction, the cities versus the unincorporated area, that we could, that could be compatible, though I don't know exactly.
Perhaps when Mr. Moll returns, we'll ask him if that's been.
So the subarea approach, the basic building block of that is we're doing an inventory of each jurisdiction from the ground up based on activity data, like how much energy, how much natural gas is used, how much traffic is generated in each jurisdiction. That builds the inventory, from there would build the projections for each jurisdiction. The exciting thing that I think is that we really are going to focus the customizing the measures. There are only so many ways you can reduce greenhouse gases or save energy, but we want to make sure that those measures are customized to each jurisdiction. Every jurisdiction has its own political context, its own housing stock and things. So the key to the subarea approach is to customize that at the jurisdiction level. And then finally, obviously, it's a regional plan, the regional aspects of that from the district's perspective, but it also can be, if a city so chooses, can be the city's plan to help meet some of the state mandates and show compliance with those mandates. So an interesting land use in transportation planning is obviously a very local planning process. And we were trying to figure out how to deal with that in the CAP because obviously some of those emissions, transportation-related emissions are pertinent to the Climate Action Plan, but at the same time, it's a local process that will take time to plan that out, as well as the Regional Transportation Plan process is going to follow in schedule a little bit. So the idea is that jurisdictions have the option to defer land use in transportation measure development to the RTP process or the local jurisdiction's own land use in transportation planning process. The only assumption that we'd use in the CAP is that it would achieve the SB 375 mandated 0% growth in vehicle emission, related emissions. So that would be the assumption, we could play around with that, but that's what we're proposing right now, that would just be a placeholder. All right, so try not to bore you with the state legislation, but the basic idea is that the state has passed a wide variety of legislation that mandates in some cases and strongly encourages in other that the reduction of greenhouse gases. How that translates to both industry and local jurisdictions is, for industry, there are certain targets that will, that are mandated that large polluters will have to meet. For local jurisdictions, it's, or local governments, it's recommended that a city reduce its, and the county reduce its emissions 15% below current levels by the year 2020. That is, it's encouraged or recommended, but the Attorney General has a unsavory tendency to follow up with nasty letters if you show a plan or don't have a plan or show a plan that does not achieve such reductions.
What's the consequence of a nasty letter?
Largely, it will, it holds up the, if it was general plan, it would hold up the EIR process. Larger projects can actually get potentially sued. The city of Stockton probably had the most serious issue where the Attorney General came in and basically shut down a whole specific planning area, and they had to do all these external issues to, basically set negotiations to figure out between the developer, the city, and the Attorney General's, a negotiated settlement there. SB 375, I mentioned earlier, that's the state legislation to, that sets regional vehicle emissions target. Luckily for Shasta, it's not a reduction, but it is a zero, it's a flatlining of vehicle emissions going forward, so accommodating growth and achieving that 0% growth target is still challenging. I guess the only, the.
Excuse me, I'd like to interrupt for a second, Mayor, if I can. So they're setting a 0% growth over where we are right now?
Correct.
And we're going to figure that one out?
That's, yes. My understanding is that the city would choose to work with RTPA and your own, and figure that out.
And if a community grows and there's an increase of 25% or 10% vehicles in that area, it would stand to reason, unless they're all electric vehicles, that we're going to have a growth here. What would be the penalty then for not meeting this particular Senate bill on the 375?
That's complicated, but it's, the short of it is that it's tied to regional transportation funds, and basically, the region needs to show compliance to, with the state mandated target, and then they, with.
The withhold money?
That's my understanding, is that it hasn't been, nobody's suffered that yet, but that's the idea, that transportation funding could be in jeopardy.
I believe there also might be some sequoia consequences going forward. If you comply, if you're able to maintain that zero or near zero, from a sequoia standpoint, you're much better off.
Right.
Than if we exceed it, then we run into more difficulties in that regard.
There is some streamlining, if you do attain the target, then traditional, some certain traditional development projects would be streamlined if they were compliant with the general plan.
Well, it would seem like it would pretty much restrict any development, and basically, is that the, is it your feeling that's the purpose of 375, is to stop redevelopment of communities and growth?
It's.
Because we certainly don't have the technology at this point in time to have zero cars, or trucks, or diesels, or buses, or anything else at this point in time.
It's going to be a challenge. I'm not, in certain parts of the state, obviously, it's easier where they can orient growth towards transit. In other states, they tried to reflect that with the 0% growth, it's still a challenge. So, but yes, what we would propose is that the city figure out with RTPA how to meet that at this level, not us, you know, come up with measures.
Well, we're at the core, at the heart of this whole thing now.
Yes.
Because it points out the importance of regional transportation planning. We have to, as we go forward, ensure that we are doing everything possible to, through proper planning of where we have growth, commercial, residential growth, to limit to a degree possible the vehicle miles traveled as a result of that growth. That's going to be the challenge, the only way. There may be some technological support through improvement in auto technology, but for the most part, it's going to be up to this region, not city by city or city by county, but this region to come up with plans that mitigate as much as possible the effect of greenhouse gases in our planning. So that's extremely important for us to all get a handle on what we're going to be, what we're going to be required to do going forward.
Councilmember City, to give you a real simple answer, land use, local land use represents less than 5% of the total greenhouse gas issue statewide, which is a very, very small percentage. And the state has already acknowledged that Shasta County, as well as five other regions, are not big players in that. And so the notion that our local land use is somehow going to crumble under these laws is frankly absurd. What we're doing is, we're essentially saying, we have a lot of industries that are subject to these greenhouse gas laws that are going to be majorly impacted. We have cement kilns, we have power plants, we have a number of facilities that generate very large greenhouse gases. And so what we want to do is, we want to put together a document here that's going to be able to, each jurisdiction's going to be able to use when they evaluate a project. We're more worried about SEQA projects than we are about local land use in transportation. That'll find its own way. The RTPAs will play the endless game with Caltrans and the feds, and they'll figure out how to deal with that. But what we don't have an answer to is the SEQA question. We're already getting lawsuits based on greenhouse gases. The Attorney General has already sued several jurisdictions on greenhouse gases. But what we're more worried about are opponents to projects. We have a power plant right now that we're working on, that the opponents are lining up to sue the proponents of the project and the local jurisdiction on greenhouse gases. We need to have a document, AKA a climate action plan, that gives us the parameters that we're working with to offset those greenhouse gases or to acknowledge them and what they mean. And we don't have that document. That's why we're working pretty quickly to do this, is to be able to support the projects that want to come into the community. One thing that I'm not sure if the council is aware or not, Stillwater Business Park is not shovel-ready. I know you've heard that it is, but it's not. If any business manufacturer that comes in with a regulated emission wants to go in Stillwater Business Park, they're going to have to have an environmental review just for their emissions, and that includes greenhouse gases. If the city of Redding is the lead agency, doesn't have that component put together to evaluate that, then it will likely go by default to the air district to evaluate for SEQA purposes. If there's any opponents to that project, it's going to get hung up in that process. So we're moving very quickly to try to put something in place that manufacturers who may want to move to the community can base their greenhouse gas analysis on, and to offset any of those greenhouse gases that may need to be offset. In other words, Cully will explain in just a few minutes that there'll be measures. In other words, a community could say, okay, our power plants are all based on natural gas, and we acknowledge that. But what we are doing is we're putting in a solar requirement for all new homes to have solar, or white roofs, or all kinds of different things that you can do to offset new greenhouse gases, or to reduce the 15% that the state is pointing at. So don't get too hung up on transportation and land use because that's not going to be the controlling factor, at least in our jurisdiction, Shasta County and the communities. It's not going to be the controlling factor on businesses versus no businesses. It's going to be how you offset for SEQA purposes.
Ms. Sullivan?
I'm, sorry, Mr. Moll. As I recall, a few years ago, when we were looking at air quality issues, some of the offsets for some businesses who were, I'm thinking of, I think, Wheel Operator, some of the offsets in those days, and I think the issue was, I can't remember the term, but little bitty grit.
Articulation.
Yes, thank you, thank you. I can't remember what that's called, but they had to pave roads. And other parts of the county is the offset. So, and I'm sorry if this is going to be explained later, but I guess I'm wondering how the county encouraging development at Churn Creek Bottom, or the city encouraging traffic north of here, that won't go, that won't be in play? I mean, that won't be something that might be used as an offset, how the transportation plan is done for that?
Well, you asked about three different questions there, crossing about four different jurisdictions.
I want to say you're still on your toes.
I'm actually representing the air district tonight, so I'll defer that to the county to answer that question when they review the Churn Creek Bottom project. I will say that any project, whether it's Oasis Road, or Churn Creek Bottom, or any of them, are going to have to have a greenhouse gas analysis to pass muster, and those are being done right now. So yes, you know, any time that you add greenhouse gases, you're going to have to figure out somewhere else where you're going to be dealing with that. And it's incumbent on each jurisdiction to do that. And so what we're saying in our project is, the air district, we have certain things that we need to deal with, the projects, the applicants that we permit, and that's what we're doing. If the local jurisdictions want our help in preparing these measures or working on the inventory with us, we'll be glad to do that. But these are bridges that you guys are going to have to cross on your own. We are not the lead agency for SEQA, except on very specific circumstances. Like when you expand your power plants or add power plants down on Clear Creek Road, you are the lead agency for that. And the only time we'd ever be involved in that is if the environmental document that you folks did didn't cover something that you're planning on doing, like a retrofit, or adding a small component or something like that. Generally speaking, you would have the responsibility to do that. So you're going to have to have that program in place. Now, whether or not the Sustainable Community Strategy for the transportation plan is adequate to do that, I can't answer. We don't feel comfortable that that will be adequate to deal with all of the issues that we deal with, biomass, and cement kilns and that type of thing, and that's why we're doing a little bit larger project. Again, land use, which is really the only thing anybody in the state has any control of, local land use, the local jurisdictions have control of, represents a very small component of this whole thing. And so these industries are kind of waging this back and forth with the state, and we want to make sure that we're ahead of that game, and working with our industries here and new ones that may want to come into the area to site here, so they don't get all tangled up in that process as soon as they come to the front door. Because I can tell you, they're going to get tangled up all over state of California trying to figure this one out, because this is a pretty complex law.
Let's go ahead and move on.
All right, so throughout the climate action planning process, while there are these state mandates, we, the district really wants to emphasize that there are also opportunities locally. Many of the same reductions that reduced greenhouse gases also reduce energy at the home, at the business level, they can reduce transportation costs, they can help protect water supply, and other such benefits. So it is, throughout the process, we're always going to be looking for the whole benefit stream, not just simply greenhouse gases.
Mr. Brissette. I'm sorry, Mayor, for dragging this on here, but this is, I always am taken back when I see a report from government that says cost savings. And so, energy cost savings, so with this plan in place, we're going to be saving energy costs.
Avoided costs, yeah.
The avoided costs.
Right.
Because we're going to be planning smarter, and we're not going to be traveling as far between places to get to places, is that what we're talking about? Again, I'm going back, sorry, Mr. Moll, for going back into the land use issues here again, the water supply protection, all of these, the avoided costs, it's never something that you can put your hand on and say, this is, you're going to save 15 and a half million dollars next year in the city of Redding because we've got this great plan in place.
Right, the best area for that is the building energy component, the others are a little bit harder to cost, but the building energy, there's, especially for retrofit, there's substantial costs, and those will be calculated as we go through the measure development.
Explain to me, because when I got this, my really, energy security costs.
Energy security costs.
Well, it says, local opportunities, the energy security.
Mr. Clark, can you pull that page up for the audience, please?
We were just at it, weren't we?
Yeah, but he has the point correct there.
I'm sorry, I mean, that, I was looking at this, this page kind of just jumped off at me when I was going through my packet, looking at it, and it says page 10 here, Mr. Clark, I'm not sure if that's the same one that's on the, on the presentation there. But it's an opportunity, what's the, explain to me the local opportunity for energy security.
So that idea of energy security is, instead of relying on foreign fossil fuels and volatility of that, that price that we saw in 2008.
Stop burning gas in our cars, then that's security.
Probably more on building energy again, or going towards local biomass that maybe create jobs and also be a local resource. So the fuels, you know, transportation, as Russ said, it's a very complex issue.
Okay, you're explaining to me. Thank you, I just, it just, I never understand when it says cost savings in these things, so.
All right, thank you.
Never seen anything that says that.
So I'll just quickly, in the interest of time, go through the plan process. As I said earlier, we're going to start, we've already started developing the greenhouse gas inventories and projections. That work is underway. We're reviewing existing conditions. We'd really like to make these measures and plans relevant to the local context. So we'll look at existing conditions like building stock age, types of the energy generation portfolio of the different jurisdictions, types of how people travel in the community to get a really good feel. We don't like to use generic measures from, you know, Sacramento and bring them up here to Shasta, we want to make sure that they fit the local context. The policy analysis is similar, going through the city and county's documents to see what type of policies are in place, so we're not creating redundant, and hopefully we can build on existing policies and move forward that way. The next step is developing the preliminary measures, and that's, we'll vet those with each jurisdiction through the working group that I'll discuss later. The cost, the measure, cost effectiveness analysis is a really great opportunity to work with the jurisdiction staff, and really fine tuning the assumptions and all the measures to the local jurisdiction. Really, we have this software where we gain the assumptions to reflect, you know, the level of participation or energy savings that that jurisdiction wants to partake in. So that's a, that's a great area to customize the plan and the measures to the jurisdiction. Finally, developing the final measures and preparing the climate action plan.
I have a question relative to, number one, your inventory and the process that you're using or will be using to inventory the various emission sources, particularly, my interest, of course, is those that you identify within the city of Redding that will later impact what the city of Redding is able to do. My question, and perhaps this is better suited for Mr. Moll than you, will the city of Redding have the opportunity to review those emission inventories, modify them, and take other steps that may be necessary as this process goes forward? Or are we going to be just waiting to see what the board says?
Well, first of all, if you're participating in the process, it's going to be a lot easier to have a handle on that. What we're talking about essentially in inventory that the city would provide would be things like solid waste facilities, sewage disposal facilities, water treatment plants, the municipal services. All the other data is really black and white kind of data that's out there, and we're just collating all of that. You certainly, there's two ways you can do it. You can either sit around and wait until we're done and take a look at the document and decide whether you think it's good or not. You don't have to adopt it, you don't have to do anything you want with it if you don't want. But if you want to participate, we'd be glad to have you, you can work on it all the way through, and yeah, you can have all the input you want in the numbers. Like I say, it's pretty much black and white, we're not going to be, it's pretty hard to make up a power plant. And so you've got X number of power plants, you've got X number of sewage treatment plants, X number of landfills, and so all of that is pretty easy to do. So if there's a mistake, it's pretty obvious, and you could find it pretty easily, but we certainly like the participation of each jurisdiction in identifying those areas.
Okay, well, I believe we'll see to it that you get that participation.
That would just be swell, thank you.
From the city of Redding.
All right, so as Russ said.
On that back chart, what are those Cs off to the side? You had page 12 and 13 are similar.
Yeah. Those are, basically, it was, the idea was to show at each step, the city would have involvement in either reviewing or participating in developing the assumptions that go into each step. And so at the beginning, the inventory, both providing data and in terms of the forecast, the city would need to help provide the assumptions for growth.
All right.
And then down the way, it's each a point where the city would have input or review.
It didn't mean that the county was going to do it?
All right, again, we're developing, 2008 is the baseline inventory year, developing forecasts for 2020, 2035, and 2050, those that have. Those, the forecast years tie to legislation, and that's why those were selected. Stop me if you want more detail, I mean, I move more fast.
Ms. Sullivan.
Transportation, you have, I'm sorry, one back. Well, on this one also, travel mode split. Is that being built by the Regional Transportation Planning Agency, or who's, how is that?
The inventory that's based on the model, the regional model, transportation model. And so those are being pulled directly out of the work that's already been done. That would be the traffic and the emissions would be pulled from that data.
The 2008 inventory is over what exists in the future or what's already on the drawing?
Correct, correct, yeah. Existing conditions, again, we're in the middle of this for, we haven't started for Redding, but we have started looking at various local context, look demographics, land use patterns, waste characteristics, things basically to give us an idea of what type of measures would be appropriate in each jurisdiction. Policy analysis is looking, again, at the plans and identifying existing programs and opportunities. Developing preliminary measures, basically, this comes from both the existing conditions analysis, the gap analysis, also from ideas from the inventory and importantly, from the working group that will help over participate in this project. And a list of preliminary measures will be distributed to the working group, which would, if you participated, would have city staff on that. And those, the working group would review those measures and basically give feedback of which ones make sense for their jurisdiction and which ones don't make sense.
Excuse me, and the little tiny, tiny print there on the right-hand side.
Yep.
Are those already in place in the county? Do you, when you're issuing your building permits, Russ, are you guys issuing energy performance certificates for the new homes?
This is just an example from, actually, from a different, complete different cabinet.
This is something that somebody's put into place for their plan?
This was a preliminary list of all opportunities that you could do and which ones make sense, which ones are too rigorous, which ones are acceptable for the community. And basically, the idea is to vet which ones.
Well, I was looking at their, the one above that is pronounced RICO, but.
That's a controversial one.
Yes, the residential energy conservation. I mean, we're pretty much a residential area at this point in time. I can just see some huge costs that are going to be coming down the line here, or we just stop building homes. Or the homes are just going to get really expensive. And it's not just in Chasta County or Redding, it's going to be statewide, and I just, I just don't, I guess, I'm.
That's the type of deliberation that's really important to the process, but basically show you the whole spectrum of opportunities and the jurisdictions choose the ones that make sense to their political and local context. So. During the cost effective analysis, we're, obviously, how much greenhouse gas it reduces is an issue, the cost to the jurisdiction is an issue, the cost to private on certain measures is a, is a big issue. And then obviously, the local context, whether it makes sense. This goes through filter, basically, through the staff and obviously the policy makers, and goes from a potential measure, and that filters that list down to a few really great measures that will go into the climate action plan. Again, during this process, we'll work with staff to gain the assumptions in there, how much of the community would participate, to what degree, what type of energy performance or emission reductions would be achieved. And that, it's, that's a great opportunity to really craft into the jurisdiction. The final measures, once we've vetted through that, develop the final measures, basically gives you, let's bring it, still can't see it, but the idea is that it would be a general measure that would cover the whole county, but the assumptions would be developed per jurisdiction. So whether the jurisdiction participates in that measure or not is a factor, and then to what degree is a factor, and those would be represented in the climate action plan. And then finally, preparing the draft, climate action plan, the working group would review it. I assume at that time, staff would also review it and provide comments. There would be public review sessions, council study session, or, sorry, multiple jurisdictions here, a board study session to inform the supervisors. There would be optional city council study sessions that we could discuss if cities are interested in that. But basically, a time for both the public and the city to vet through what the contents of the draft and to figure out if that makes, if it needs revision. And then finally, obviously, final cap would be prepared, it would be adopted by the county board of supervisors, and obviously, the option would remain to, for the city to adopt it as its cap as well. But that is a local decision.
Ms. Sullivan.
You mentioned working group there a few times. Obviously, a lot of work's already been done. Is there already a working group?
Yes.
Who's on, who's in?
Um, let's see.
We went names and home addresses.
There we go. The working group had its first meeting at January 4th, City of Anderson representative, City of Redding was there, I think, just observationally for that meeting, Chasta Lake, and then various industries as well, representatives. So that, that's the meeting. Russ, do you want to say anything else about the constituents?
No, I would just point out that Redding had more representatives than anybody else in the room.
That's good.
So feel free to send as many as you want. It's really, it's an advisory group to us, to the staff. And what we're trying to, this is a very working document, it's not nearly as interesting as everybody would like to think it is. We're trying to put together a document that works for everybody individually, jurisdiction as well as ourselves. And so, and that's why we're relatively heavy on the different resource groups. Like, I mean, if you want to talk about blueprint planning or something like that, you know, there wasn't a lot of ag community and timber community and miners in that group. And so what we're doing is we're having them there because they're the ones, in fact, if somebody's building, and I keep referring to biomass plants because we have eight of them in the, in the community, if somebody's building a biomass plant, they're probably able to sequester carbon in their timberlands. And unless they're there to tell us how that works, how that happens, how cap and trade works, it's probably going to get screwed up. And so we have very specific groups represented so that they can tell us the nuance of how they're planning on meeting their requirements under greenhouse gases. So anybody who wants to be in the group and has something positive to, to add certainly can. It's not an exclusive club.
Thank you, gentlemen.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Mr. Starman, this is an informational item. How would you like us to proceed? Would you like some input from council about how to proceed, or you have an idea?
Well, as you mentioned, it's an information item that doesn't require action. So I think if the council desires additional information or either from the air quality management district or from city staff, if you have questions like that, that'd be appropriate. And if you have some inclination, I don't think it requires a vote, but some direction, if you would like to direct the city staff to participate in the process, that'd be appropriate as well, just sort of by consensus as opposed to action.
I assume that would be Mr. Hamilton would, and Mr. Crane, or one or the other, as far as that.
I think it probably involves two.
The electric department.
Yeah, I think it probably involves at least two major stakeholders within the city organization. One is from a planning perspective and land use perspective, which would be Mr. Hamilton and his staff. But the other major stakeholder, as referenced by our speaker, is the Redding Electric Utility. This has significant, or the potential for significant implications for, as an example, our power plant on Clear Creek Road. So I think at a minimum, we'd have representation from our planning staff and from our electric utility.
And we could just let Mr. Hamilton and Mr. Hoosier decide who that is?
Correct.
And then from city council, I was thinking of Mr. Bissetti and Mr. Dickerson, if they were amenable to representing, I'm a little.
I heard Mr. Moll say that all are welcome, so I think that's fine. It may be a major time commitment, so it's at their discretion, but certainly, I heard Mr. Moll say all are welcome to participate.
It's not that we don't like politicians, but you might find it kind of boring. But feel free, if you want to sit in on the meetings, that's fine, it is fine with me.
Okay, Ms. Sullivan.
I just have a logistics question. I don't know if this is still true, but it used to be a Brown Act rule that if, if elected officials were appointed to something, then you had to follow all the notice and keep them in. Is that still?
Yes, that does. And in fact, that's why it's a committee that advises me. Because if it was a board-appointed committee, an air pollution control board-appointed committee, then it would be a Brown Act committee, and you would have the cost of the public notices and that kind of thing.
So that's a good point, Ms. Sullivan. So probably it's better to not appoint from up here, but just show up if we want to.
All show up randomly.
We'd be glad to have you. We had cookies last time, so you.
Free food, we're there.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Madam Mayor, with your permission, I don't know if they have any sage advice or input, but we have the two individuals in the room from the city's perspective have a lot of information about this topic or expertise. One is Mr. Hamilton, he may have some supplemental thoughts or questions or advice or recommendations for the council. Then the, as mentioned, the Redding Electric Utility also has a vested interest, and Elizabeth Hadley with the utility is here as well. So Elizabeth and Jim may have some additional thoughts or recommendations. I want to give them a chance to speak if they have something to add.
And FYI, I do have one speaker card on this subject, too.
Well, I'd be happy to respond to any of the questions that the council may have. I think Mr. Moll has characterized it as it's reflected currently in the program. I think the issue itself is actually a little more substantial than it's been projected here. The potential ramifications, as Mr. Moll indicated, hit us in several areas, transportation, planning, and land use. While we do have a substantial interest in making sure that those things work in the fashion that's in the best interest of our citizens, so the city council certainly should be involved in decisions relative to that topic. CEQA is another issue. What we're really talking about here is establishing a baseline, that's the inventory. And then as projects come forward, comparing those projects to that inventory and that baseline to determine the level of impact that they have. And what's necessary, probably more importantly, how do you mitigate those impacts and bring them down to a level that complies with what the law entails? Again, that has pretty significant local implications beyond the individual power plant or the individual manufacturer. It, you know, it's all the way down to subdivisions and shopping centers and all those other types of things. I do have a concern that the way that, as I understand the current proposal, the regional transportation plan model, which has been the basis of transportation planning and was completed several years after in the boom years, based on some fairly aggressive projections for development into the future that we're not likely to see, is the baseline for, is what we're going to use or what's being proposed to be used for the baseline today. Going forward, with the SCS, and that would be into those projection years, 2020 and beyond, it's likely that the SCS, that's required, that the RTPA's participation in developing where the city has representation directly on the board, will be making decisions about that particular element. And one of the first steps in that will be to actually revise that regional transportation model and to bring it more in line with what more realistic projections would be going forward. So I think there's some issues and things like that, and our participation in this effort is certainly critical and important, and I'm glad that the council wants to support us in participating in that effort. I do think that we need to make sure that as a local entity, we're evaluating these things and having a reasonable understanding of what the implications are of them going forward into the future.
Okay, thank you.
I just had one other request of Mr. Moll. I think it would be important, and I'm speaking now as the chairman of RTPA, if you or someone from your staff could present to the RTPA a condensed presentation focused principally on RTPA issues relative to what you're doing. Could you get with Mr. Little and make that happen?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, I would.
Not a problem.
I would appreciate that.
Yeah. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Gary Cadd.
Madam, excuse me, Madam Mayor, members of the council, staff, I had the information on this exact issue, and I took it out of my briefcase tonight because the case was getting heavy, didn't think I'd be using it, so I'm shooting from the hip. But having said that, I believe it was on October 10th of 2010, over at the old city hall, there was a meeting that some of you folks attended. There was a fellow from California Association of County Governments, Rusty Sidics was there, and he put on about a 20, 25-minute talk. Some of his comments were very striking to me, that Redding will not have a 30-story apartment buildings in downtown Redding tomorrow, but they are in our future. This is, this is what we're coming to. This issue is driving that. Now, I believe that, without, without going through RTPA and the CalGOG or California Association of County Governments, Mr. Dickerson's just been elected vice president of that organization. And RTPA is joined in with 17 other counties into a North State super collaborative regional platform, and they have about 12 different items, and I don't have the paper, their paperwork in front of me to read from it tonight, but they, they're dealing with land use, development, water issues, transportation, a lot more than what RTPA you would think the transportation group would be dealing with. They also have mentioned sustainable developments, attainable communities, and smart growth, which is agenda 21, is loss of private property rights. I think what has just been said here tonight, something proves, proves out that all these meetings, and I think we need to start doing this with a lot of meetings, such as RTPA with Rabid, we need to start recording them and putting them online. It's not that costly. But what was just said here a minute ago was that some folks are going to be working on this collaboratively here, but we, the people over here, need to know what's going on. We need, we need to be able to be in the process, not see what the process is going to be when the, when the final is all done, and we're going, well, where did that come from? So it behooves you folks to, as Councilwoman Sullivan just mentioned, that, to deal with the Brown Act, because the Brown Act's there for a reason. And you folks need to be on that committee, and we need to tape it so that we out here know what's going on, and there's not a, a problem at a later date, because I see problems with this coming up, especially with RTPA being able to exempt themselves from CEQA, which is part of their information. I wish I had it tonight. But anyway, I wanted to put those, those comments on record.
Thank you, Mr. Cadd. I do have a question for Mr. Moll. How will we know where these and when these meetings are?
We provide that information on our website, the Chasta Air Quality Management District website, or the resource management, you can go through resource management, Chasta County Resource Management, and get to the district website, or you can just type in Chasta, Chasta Air Quality Management District, and you can get that information there. Like I say, anyone can sit in on these as they want, but I got to tell you, it's not going to be very interesting. This, we're not writing laws here, we're not writing mandates, we're essentially developing a guidance document for how we work on land use projects, but the more the merrier. If people want to sit in on that, we'd be delighted to have them. What we do know is that if we don't do this, Sacramento is just dying to do it for us and tell us how to do this. And so that's why we're trying to stay ahead of the game. If people want to get a list, if they don't want to go to the internet, they can call our office, and we'd be glad to tell them when the meetings are, when we schedule them. And they can participate as much as they would like. And then there'll also be hearings. We're also going to do some public hearing scenarios when we're done and have a draft document, and we'll advertise those so everybody can come and listen to that. They will not be adopted, there's no adoption process unless your jurisdiction adopts it as your document. And so that's entirely up to your public hearing process, how you do that. So it's sort of duplicative Brown Act process here.
Great.
And so you'll get more information than you could ever want by that duplicate process.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.